Let's call to order the meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners, regular agenda, May 18th, 2016. To order, clerk, can we please have a roll call?
There are ten present, two absent.
Okay, and let the record show that the Cindy's are both excused for the week. Moving on to the prayer and the pledge, Commissioner Henderson.
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance. United States of America, and in the name of our God, the Lord, and the provision stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now would be the time if there's any public comment for items that are on tonight's agenda. Anyone wishing to give public comment on an agenda? Item for this evening now would be the time. Seeing none, move into the approval of the minutes from the May 4th, 2016 meeting. Commissioner Morgan?
At this time I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting, May 4th, 2016.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We do have an agenda to be added to the, or an item to be added to the agenda this evening. So with that, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. In accordance with the provisions of Section 6 of Rule 6 of the Rules of Business of the Council of Commissioners of the City and County of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, the council hereby finds an emergency condition exists which requires that council rules be suspended to allow Resolution Number 16-26 to be added to the agenda of the May 18th regular meeting of the council. At this time, I make a motion to approve the suspension of the rules to consider placing Resolution Number 16-26 on the agenda at the May 18th, 2016 regular meeting and further introducing the Resolution Number 16-26 for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and add this to the agenda. Is there anything on the question? Okay, seeing none, this is a roll call vote, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten ye, zero nay.
Okay, so let the record show that the rules have been suspended to add Communication 16-26 to the agenda. I will place it in Section 3 Communications to be read and acted upon, which at this time I would also note that we will move Communication 16-211 up to the front of the agenda, directly concluding my chief executive report, which I will keep as brief as possible here. We'll start by just making a note here for all commissioners and the public that our alley rally has officially opened today. The hours are going to be from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and from 9:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, and it's located in that standard location right across from our city county shops on Civic Center Road and is expected to stay there through the course of the summer until such time. Construction activities on the Parrot Tailings remediation and restoration action may commence. So again, this is being, being run through our Public Works Department and under the management of our Community Enrichment Department. So any questions that you have should be directed to Ed Randall or Assistant Community Enrichment Director John Mudry. Also, something that we want to continue to get the word out on there that you might want to make your constituents aware is we're offering a new service based on some need that's been voiced to us over the last couple months. Elderly or senior citizens over the age of 65 or who are physically unable to unload large items, be it appliances or furniture items, we have got a appliance pickup service where our Community Enrichment Department will go to, to pick up these items from residents' homes and haul them to either the recycler. Put a thanks out to H&amp;H Recycling who is accepting these items, refrigerators, dishwashers, the like. And then also if it's, if it's not an appliance, it'd just be hauled directly to the landfill. Again, residents can call Community Enrichment at 497-5024 to schedule a pickup. And I know just in the first week, we've had over 40 residents call for assistance from this, this service. So make, make your, your constituents or anyone you might know that, that has a need for this service aware of it. And also people for looking, looking to get outside now that the, the weather is becoming a bit more stable. The animal shelter wants me to make aware that they have their walk a dog program for their shelter animals. That takes place every day from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. If you are a citizen that wants to take one of our shelter animals out for, for a walk and perhaps adopt that animal if you get along very well, that, that is, we're looking for volunteers to, to help out in that capacity. And so you can call our animal shelter and talk to Jassy, Jackie Castagrande or one of her employees at 497-6528. It's also, I'd like to point out the budget season, and so I know that Finance and Budget Director Gleason did present to the Finance and Budget Committee our, our schedule for this year for our budgetary activities. Just for folks' reference here, the preliminary budget from the executive branch is expected to be delivered to the Council of Commissioners on June 29th of this year, at which point it will go through the, the process that would see us having a, a final public hearing and adoption of the budget on August 15th of, of 2016. And again, if, if you haven't gotten a copy of this schedule, I have a copy here, and I know that we'll get a copy to all commissioners, not just those under Commissioner Soree's guidance on Finance and Budget Committee. Also to that end, as we've done for the last few years now, we will be releasing a survey online for our citizens to weigh in and, and give us a little bit of feedback on what kind of priorities they think we should be looking at as we formulate our, our budget for this year. We're in the process of putting that survey together, and it will be live on our website early next week. And so I'll send out an email to commissioners and to the media once that's available for folks to, to get online and take a look at. And lastly, we also, next week, as we've been doing the last few years, or as I've been doing the last few years, it's that time for the State of the City address. And so next Wednesday, June 1st at noon at the Butte Brewing Company, I'll be giving the State of the City address over what's taken place the last 12 months and where we're looking going into, to next year. That event is being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and the Local Development Corporation, and I think they're providing lunch, so if nothing else, you can get a free lunch out of it, if not a, an update. So that would conclude my chief executive report. We will now move into Communication 16-211, and this will be me requesting council to concur with the appointment of Matt Picorni as a probationary entry-level firefighter. Chief Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, for the record, my name is Jeff Miller, Director of Fire Services. I'd just like to briefly touch upon the recruitment process that is used to make the council aware of how we get to where we are tonight. This process begins approximately a year prior in Great Falls in June of last year. All the candidates in this process start with the Montana Firefighter Testing Consortium, at which time they undergo a written test and then a rigorous candidate physical abilities test that then make them eligible for hiring any of the departments that are part of the firefighter testing consortium. They then are interviewed by the Butte Silver Bow Fire Commission, which interviews all of the candidates. We had a real outstanding group of candidates this year, real good, good group of kids that went through the process. It's, it's highly competitive. A lot of these, these candidates knew each other, they're friends, they were competing against one another. Matt rose to the top of this. Matthew Picorni was the number one candidate. He's a Butte native, 2016, or 2006 graduate of Butte Central High School. He was prior to this evening, he was an employee and EMT for A1 ambulance for quite a long period of time, a darn good EMT for A1 ambulance. He's here tonight with his wife Caitlin, some other family members, and a large number of supporters. So I would just ask respectfully that you concur with the chief executive's appointment to the Butte Silver Bow Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Commissioner Foley?
Thank you. It is my honor to make a motion and to concur with requests in Communication 16-211 and confirm the appointment of Matt Picorni as probationary entry-level firefighter with the Butte Silver Bow Fire Department and place this communication on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a lot of seconds. I think in due respect and full disclosure, I will say that there is some rumor going around after Mr. Picorni's storied career at Butte Central that Mr. Miller might have pulled a few strings to give his department a leg up in the guns and hoses competition. That, that aside, we, we congratulate you and really look forward to having, having you serve for us. So let's make this official. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. All right, moving into Section 1, bid openings, public hearings, and presentations. We have some of all of those this evening, so we'll start with Communication 16-177. Excuse me, prior to that, I guess I will call on our county attorney just to confirm that we have proper publication of the bid openings and public hearing. County Attorney Joyce?
Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publication for both bid openings and the public hearing, and all appear to be in the order.
Okay, thank you very much. Communication 16-177, JP Gallagher, Parks and Recreation Director, requesting council authorize time this evening to conduct a bid opening regarding the Butte Silver Bow invitation for bid for the Miners Field Masonry Project at Copper Mountain Sports Park. Mr. Gallagher?
Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioners, it appears that we have one bid only tonight, and it's from Markovich Construction, and so I'll open it now.
Okay.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensed surety company that does appear to be in order.
Okay, very good.
The bid for, for the masonry project at Miners Field. Item number one, the total price under the base bid pricing is $23,800. Item number two is $71,900. Item number three, $138,500. Item number four, $30,900. And item number five, $61,900. For a total base bid price of $327,000. The added alternative bid, A1, is $26,800. So the total alternative bid price is $26,800. For a total. Do we have a calculator for the two?
Okay, Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, JP, on item number four, did you say $30,900?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, this kind of a question, now this was, broke down this time, JP broke down in a, from what was from the original, and we just got one bid. Was there anybody said anything of why this one bid? I mean, there's a lot of cement guys out there, isn't there?
You know, Commissioner Henderson, the, I, I can't really answer that because nobody really responded or called into question of why they were or were not bidding. We did have quite a few people show up to walk through and request documents on this, so I am not sure what the cause of the, of people not bidding here is.
Follow up?
Follow up?
Well, I can imagine, I guess probably they're pretty busy, everybody, so, for the season, so with the short season, I guess that would probably be it. Thank you.
Commissioner Soree?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. JP, I just want to commend you on this form. It's really, it's really informative, and it worked out well for us, you know, on your bid tabulation form.
Commissioner Soree, thanks for that. I'll give credit to pioneers, they give that to me, and I just made copies for all of you, so made it a little easier for you.
Thanks Mitch, Josh. Josh, thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. Mr. Gallagher, I'm looking at these numbers, and I'm kind of surprised, I imagine Pioneer put the engineering estimates together. Any idea on the variation? It seems about a third higher than, 33, 40% higher than the estimate across the board almost.
Commissioner Anderson, I, I really cannot speak to that. I do not know why that, you know, the, the difference in, in the price. You know, without having competitive multiple bids here, it's hard to, to guess why that would be.
Fair enough. Seeing none, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll make a motion to refer the bids to the Public Works Department and ask them to report back to council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication 16-182, Nick Sanford, Road Operations Manager, requesting council authorize a bid opening for this evening for the Community Transportation Enhancement Program Bike Routes Project on the Butte Flats. Mr. Sanford?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Council Commissioners, it appears we have one bid from Highmark Traffic Services in, from Billings, Montana.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond from a licensed surety company in the amount of 10% that does appear to be in order.
Okay, thank you.
So this, this bid included installation of bike route signage and provided install share-o pavement markings, and a total bid price of $96,000, $96,450.
Any questions on that? No questions? Commissioner Anderson?
Do you have an estimate for the work? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Commissioner Anderson, Pioneer Technical Provider Engineers estimate of $107,820.
Okay. Okay, no further questions, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'll make a motion to refer the bids to the Public Works Department and ask them to report back to council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication three, or number three, Communication 16-189, Julie Connors, Finance and Budget, asking council authorize a public hearing for this evening for the purpose of amending the fiscal year budget 1516 to allow for unanticipated revenue related to audit finding 15-6 in Butte Silver Bow's June 30th, 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Here tonight is Finance and Budget Director Gleason. Danette?
Chief Executive Vincent, Council Commissioners, I also have with me tonight Bill Melvin, the manager of the Butte Civic Center. We're here tonight requesting this budget amendment to address audit finding 15-6 from the 2015 audit. If you recall, there was a box office cash account that had not been properly recorded and accounted for within the treasurer's office. And Julie Connors, who is a senior accountant within the Finance and Budget Department, did a lot of work along with Crystal Ackerman, the clerk down at the Civic Center. And I passed out to each one of you a spreadsheet detailing out all of these events and summarizing what the resolution will look like that we will be submitting after this public hearing process. The count had $88,296 in it that we need to incorporate in our books. Basically, what we're asking for, and that money has all been deposited within the treasurer's office, that was done immediately in January after we were noted of the account and the findings. But what we've done over the course of time is make sure that we had an accurate accounting of each one of the events. Crystal and Julie, like I had mentioned, done a lot of work on this project, making sure that everything's accurately accounted for. And what we're asking is just basically to bring on our books the relevant expenditures and revenues associated with this box office account. And as we move forward, Julie's working with Crystal, myself, and Bill Melvin to go through some of the processes and procedures that were instituted a few years ago based on some audit recommendations over a period of years. And we're also going to look at maybe making further recommendations within the Finance and Budget Department to the Civic Center in regards to what other transactions might, we might be able to incorporate directly into the treasurer's account and really limit the activity that we're seeing in this box office account.
Okay, very good. Any questions or other clarifications? Mr. Melvin, you have nothing to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. For the record, I'm Bill Melvin, 911 Montrose, Butte, Montana. I'm here in my capacity as the Civic Center manager. Part of the confusion that came in with that account getting so big was that we started doing our self-promotion. Self-promotion means that we do not have a middleman when it comes to rodeo, some bazaars, and other events at the Civic Center. Also, we do charge $2 a ticket on credit card sales, and we had a little trouble accounting for those. Julie has done a great job. We now account for that on a monthly basis, and all of the money is going into the account. So it was a learning curve for us, kind of a little bit of growing pains, but all the money has been accounted for. Now it will go through the budget process. So if I'm understanding correctly, our budget will increase a little bit, and we'll go through the purchase order system for a lot of our expenditures now out of the box office account, which of course goes to the Finance and Budget Committee.
Okay, very good. All right, seeing no additional questions or information, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any proponents in the audience wishing to speak on this unanticipated revenue? Any proponents? Are there any opponents? Last and final call for opponents or proponents. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Communication 16-181, Dave Boyd, CCCS Director of Treatment Programs, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a present, presentation from Community Counseling and Correction Services and the Management Team of the Southwest Montana Addiction Recovery and Treatment Program, that is SMART, on this evening, May 18th, 2016. Mr. Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Chief, Chief Executive. For the record, my name is Dave Boyd, live at 3450 Burlington. I'm the Treatment Director for Community Counseling Correctional Services Incorporated, and part of my duties is the administration of the SMART program. Thank you very much for allowing me to come and talk with you all tonight. It's, it's been a year since we've been here, and I apologize for my CEO's absence. He is stuck in North Dakota, so that might be a good thing after all. I did promise a few of the commissioners that I would be brief, so I will uphold my word there. One of the, a couple newsworthy things, changes from last year is, that affects our program is, the biggest thing probably is the passage of the Medicaid Expansion Bill the legislature passed last year, and that is going to affect the county tax dollars for drug and alcohol treatment allotment in, in the future, and we don't know how that's all going to end up shaking out, but with the passage of that and the inception of the Montana Help Medicaid Plan, it, in essence, it affords a lot of medical services, a lot of all medical services for those folks in the 200% of poverty rate. So anyone, the single that makes $14,000 or less a year qualifies for, for full coverage, health insurance, dental, substance treatment, and $33,000 for those that are two in the family, and the number keeps going from there. So with Medicaid beginning to pay for some of the services that the tax dollars, the drug and alcohol tax dollars and block grant funding did before, it's going to be interesting to see next year what, you know, what I'd be presenting as far as numbers go in dollars. But it's, we've had our growing pains with that. We began that January 1st, so getting people signed up and enrolled in that has been quite a process for the staff, but I think we're holding pretty good with that, and it's been a nice process to be able to see people come in with insurance, and I think that helps everyone. The second thing of real importance or exciting for myself and the program is that we just signed a memorandum of, of understanding with Butte School District, number one. Commissioner Foley is aware of this project, the school-based services treatment, we're getting into the schools, we've been working at this for two years, and we're, we're finally there. The, the school board did sign that at their board meeting on Monday, so hopefully we're going to be able to provide a counselor at the high school or any of the schools for 20 hours a week to begin with, and that's all paid for through the, either the block grant or Medicaid, so it's no cost to parents, tax dollars, et cetera. So that's a big plus for this community. So that's a big plus for this community. There hasn't been any substance abuse treatment in the schools in the past. So as soon as we can get in there, we're going. The co-occurring program that I spoke to you about last year, we were just getting that off the ground, co-occurring treatment for those with mental health issues and substance issues is a huge issue in Butte. The program has taken off a lot bigger and better than I anticipated, so we've overextended that part of the budget that the state has allotted by $4,000 with that. And so I anticipate there'll be more funds available for that. That also falls under the Medicaid expansion as well. Recently, we were also contracted with Judge Krueger's Court and the, sorry, I drew a blank. The name of the grant, what we're doing is providing some chemical penalty services for those people that are incarcerated in the county detention center. The qualification and the qualifiers for that is the person must be incarcerated for 90 days, and they must have children in the home. So it's a 20-some thousand dollar grant, I believe, and the grant runs through September, and we'll work that out as far as it goes, too. That's a huge service for getting folks that are in drug court, if they go to jail, they continue their treatment, and when they come out, they're back down to the SMART program. There's no break in service. It's a huge, huge thing. Some of the statistics this year over last year is we've had an increase in ACT class DUI participants, and it's kind of shocking to me. Last report, we had 209. The year before, in our classes, this year, we're up at 290. So drinking and driving is still an issue in Butte, Montana, and it seems like it's gotten a little worse. Substance evaluations, we did 382 of those. Outpatient admissions, 119. Intensive outpatient admissions, 38. MIP classes, we had 56 students in that class, and we had 56 the year before. So that number's holding steady, unfortunately. Anger management, we had an increase up to 41 participants in that, and cognitive principles and restructuring up to 43. So those are basically our statistics for this past year. I have those for you that I'll...
Are there any questions, please? Any questions? Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Mr. Boyd? Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. Seems like you're keeping pretty busy over there with the treatment and everything. I had a question. You said you were working with the schools. I was talking to a friend of mine the other day about the DARE program and the lack of that in the schools anymore. Is there any way of bringing that back? Is there any way that that was working? Would that help? Or is having the counselor in the high school better? Seems like if you could target the kids at a younger age, it might be more beneficial. I don't really know if it's your area of expertise, but just throwing it out for thought.
Yes, Commissioner. The DARE program was proven eventually that it was not as effective as they had hoped, and it's somehow lost its luster over the years. Unfortunately, not everyone was in agreement with that, and I think that's why the funding was discontinued for that. That's about all I can tell you on that, sir.
Thank you. Dave, thanks for the services you guys provide. They're much needed, and we couldn't be blessed with a better provider of those, so...
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Thanks for entrusting us with your dollars.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Dave. Okay, moving into Section 2 Consent Agenda. Do we have any amendments or segregations? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I'd like to segregate number 6, Communication 16-209.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I would like to segregate number 14, 16-218, and number 18, 16-222. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
Communication number 4, if I could, 16-207.
You could. No further? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I make a motion that we approve Section 2, the Consent Agenda, Section A 1 through 4. Section, or Section B Communications, 1 through 25, except for number 4, Communication 16-207, number 6, 16-209, excuse me, number 14, 16-218, and number 18, Communication 16-222.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication number 4, 16-207, George Everett, Main Street, Uptown Butte, requesting council authorize street closure and use of Chester Steel Park on July 3rd for the Big Bang Freedom Fest. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. The reason why I segregated this, and I talked to Mr. Gallagher, the Director of Park and Recreation, about it, is that the department was recently doing some work at a Cinder's Park that is right next to it, and along where the back wall used to be the backstop of the home plate at the baseball field there, there's about a two-and-a-half to three-foot drop. And I'm just hoping that this could be addressed and fixed as soon as possible. There is an awful lot of children in that area running up and down the hill. There's quite a festive atmosphere, as you know, in that area, not only at St. James, not only at Chester Steel Park across from the hospital, but also at Cinder's. So just so that everybody's aware of that issue and hopefully gets taken care of as soon as humanly possible. And with that being said, I'd make a motion to concur and place this communication on file.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to concur and place on file. I see Mr. Gallagher nodding his head, so we'll certainly take note of this and have it addressed prior to the crowds utilizing this area. Nothing on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 6, Communication 16-209, Eldon Beal, 505 North Wyoming Street, requesting council consider Butte Silver Bow Ordinance 8.06.30, Community Decay Standards, in lieu of the proposed vacant building, Council Bill Number 16-2, Ordinance Number 16 Point 2. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I originally had this to be referred to Judiciary Committee, but in lieu of the scheduling of events, Eldon wanted to talk about it, so at this time, I would ask Mr. Beal to come up and talk to us about his communication.
Mr. Beal?
Eldon Beal, 505 North Wyoming, Butte, Montana. Chief Executive, Council Members. I have concerns with this because my sister owns a property, and it's been vacant, you know, and there's no plumbing and stuff in it right now, but we've all had health issues, which, you know, especially with me, we can't get up there and do certain things. And I'm just afraid of, you know, community enrichment's going to come in there. We already went rounds with them before, and, you know, didn't hit it off too good. We couldn't actually talk to Ed Randall. He was, he was pretty rude when he was talking to us, you know? He's just like, "Just stop, hold on, you know? Let me finish what I'm saying." You know, we couldn't get nothing through, you know, to him. And that's part of my concerns is, and before they do a final reading, are we going to be able to get to, be able to look at, you know, the ordinance before they do the final reading? Because there's other, like on page 3, where it says, "Less C." Less C, to me, would be like a tenant. I mean, how could they go after a tenant?
Mr. Beal, this ordinance has been referred back to the Judiciary Committee for additional revisions and discussions, and so it's not moving forward to final reading at this point in time. And so it'll be on the next Judiciary Agenda, which would be next Wednesday at 7:00 PM up here. So you can ask these questions directly to the Judiciary Committee. In the meantime, between now and next week's meeting, you can also, you know, contact our county attorney's office, who's drafting the changes to that ordinance, as well as our community enrichment department. I believe our building official in the planning department has had some hand in some of the changes that are being made to this variety of different opportunities to ask questions, but again, I just want to stress that it's not moving straight into final reading and that it's being revised significantly, I would say.
Okay. Okay, I'll wait then. All right, thank you.
All right, very good. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Beal, I don't, I mean, if there's anything else that you want to discuss to this whole body, I mean, I would say feel free to. I mean, if you covered all your topics just now, that's great, but if you feel that you want to speak...
Well, some of it is, is because of people that have health issues and disabilities and stuff to date. You know, it is going to create a hardship on those people. You know, that's part of what I wanted to say.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Thank you, Eldon. You know, I tend to agree with some of the points he writes in his letter, you know? I think that we already have ordinances that properly enforced kind of take care of this issue. And as I spoke of last week and maybe the week before even, I just don't know that this is an answer with being a voluntary program to get people to come up and pay $25 to register their building. I just don't see this as an effective, properly written ordinance. And until it gets right, I can't, I can't, I can't agree with it because I think there's just a lot of flaws in it. I think there's so many loopholes in it that it's a selective enforcement type of issue. And I've got a lot of concerns with this, and I think Mr. Beal has a lot of concerns that if you read his letter, I think he's got some issues that should be addressed prior to this vacant building ordinance being, you know, submitted to the full council. Thank you.
Okay. Further? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Eldon, what would you like me to do with this communication? We can either hold it in committee of the whole and discuss it next week, or we can note it and place on file, and you would have the opportunity to speak about it in Judiciary.
I guess that, for the judiciary...
Do you want me to forward your communication to Judiciary? Okay. So at this time, I'll make a motion that we refer Communication 16-209 to the Judiciary Committee.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to refer Mr. Beal's Communication 16-209 to the Judiciary Committee for next week. Anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Beal. Item 14, Communication 16-218, Dave Schultz, Public Works, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize the Chief Executive to sign the modification for Contract Number 80008 in place between Butte Silver Bow and the Natural Resource Damage Program. This modification allows Pioneer Technical to complete an environmental site assessment and property survey of the Gilman property. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Reason for segregating this communication is the original amount was like $56,000, $57,000 for this site selection review, and now we're adding $21,600 more, which is a substantial amount. Now, whether you call this a change order, I don't know whether you call it a change order or what, but it brings the whole thing up to about $78,000, which is just below the threshold of being, where it should have been bid out. And these kind of things concern me, and you know, they always concern me when we do these things, and the council approves a contract or whatever for $56,000, and then they come back within a month or six weeks and want another $20,000 or $25,000 to get it just at the threshold below $80,000. This kind of bothers me because I think that if these things were known, these should have been, you know, evaluated a little stronger. We had a bid opening tonight where the engineer's estimate was nowhere near what was bid on the project. These things are kind of concerning me with what's going on in government, what's going on with private enterprise. In this particular case, you know, Pioneer Technical has the option to bid the $56,000 and then come back now that it's time to do the job and want another $27,000. That's over 30%, as Mr. Anderson said. So I just wanted this to be known to everyone that, you know, these things are being noted, and, you know, we should take a little bit of concern on these. So if there's no further discussion, I would recommend that we concur and place on file Communication 16-218. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the question. I do think we have Mr. Sanford in the audience tonight. This, these are duly being noted, and I think they are obviously something of concern, not just to you, Commissioner Fisher, but to all of us as managers of the public's funds here. This is a very, I guess, extenuating circumstance. We selected that site for the relocation of the shops. I'm not sure if you are aware of what goes into an environmental site assessment, but it is fairly significant, and it really comes as a surprise to us on this site. We found that this site that was selected by this body for the county shops location was also a former refinery site back in the early 1900s, which triggers the obvious need to do a full environmental assessment of that property. And so this isn't something that just kind of was slid in. It was something that was an extenuating circumstance and required us to do the necessary due diligence to make sure we were moving forward properly on this, and certainly nothing that would be a rule, more of an exception. So with that said, on the question, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Please let the record reflect, I'm abstaining from this vote due to employment.
Very good. On the question, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you once again, Mr. Chief Executive. And rebuttal to what you're stating is, you know, we had quite a site selection committee, and, you know, they brought all this before the council. We voted as a council to select that site with the understanding, just the same way we rejected the Montana Pole Site because of that type of contamination. So, you know, this is a two-way sword, but you're coming in and asking for 35% more money to do a project that we thought we had done, and I still concur and want to concur and place on file.
Okay. Nothing further on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication 16-222, Matt Moore, Metro Operations Manager with the Public Works Department, requesting council authorize Chief Executive to sign an MOU with the City of Billings, Montana for services related to MS4 guidance. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you once again, Mr. Chief Executive. The reason I segregated this is, you remember about a year or 18 months ago, we made the same agreement with the City of Billings, in which we agreed to pay them $17,000, and we got the bill last week. It was only $14,000 was what we were billed, so I don't know why we didn't pay the full amount. This is a contract that Billings, City of Billings is doing in combination with Helena Great Falls, some of the major cities, on stormwater study. The total amount of the study is $275,000 to write a manual so that our engineers and stuff have a little better knowledge of how this works. And I've asked Matt Moore to give a little bit of talk on it. Our share of this this time will be about $33,000. My concern is our stormwater issues in Butte are a lot different than stormwater issues in Great Falls, Billings, Helena Great Falls because of our superfund and our, you know, our contaminated soils. I'm not totally against the $33,000 because, as Matt Moore will explain, it's probably well-spent, but $275,000 is the total amount, and Billings City Council will recommend how that's spent. We will have no more say on our $33,000 once we pay them. have no more say on our thirty-three thousand. Once we pay them, Billings will have to say how that money's spent. Thank you.
Matt, Mr. Chief Executive?
Commissioner Fisher, thank you. I'm Matt Moore, Public Works employee. So last year's contract with Billings was for reimbursement to the City of Billings for a contract with HDR, leading to the issuance of a new state MS four general permit. This is the permit that we have to follow. This is our legal guidance in our municipal separate storm sewer system. It's kind of our laws of stormwater by the state, which is governed by EPA. And the, the new contract or the MOU is for a guidance document for stormwater. It, it's kind of like the Montana Public Works standard specification for stormwater. The MPWSS has been out for, I think, longer than I've been around. And it's given contractors and developers guidance on how to compact soil under the asphalt, how to, how to build things. And so we're all in the same boat in the state. The idea of this is very similar. The document will be a guidance document to developers, engineers and contractors to select BMPs that are almost vetted by the, the state and the engineering community and, and our cities for use in our communities. They, there'll be some guidance, there'll be some recommendations in there. It is a contract with Billings and I believe we've gotten to the point where HDR was selected to do the, the work as well. A part in, in, in that selection criteria was some shareholder or stakeholder working groups in our city. So they'll call up some of our local developers and contractors and engineers and, and discuss some of our unique situations. So I do agree, we are quite different in our stormwater problems and issues. We do have a lot of similar issues as well. We wouldn't be able to come near getting a document like this for thirty thousand dollars. This is definitely a two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar document. It's sickening expensive sometimes since this stuff is, but it hopefully will be a very valuable tool our local contractors and developers can use and maybe drive down the cost of engineering services related to stormwater management design. So they can just say, hey, let's use this HD device or this outfall gizmo or this pond or this infiltration gallery. Be a lot more prescribed and a lot easier for developers to kind of pick and choose. So, and then some of our local engineering companies don't have experience in specifying some of these, this equipment. So we might get some new things to test out. And we have wonderful, one great thing about Butte is we have wonderful infiltrating soils. We can just dump stormwater into the soil in good areas and it just, it just disappears. Whereas other places like Billings, they can't take water in the ground, so they have to have ponds. So I, hopefully this will really help us out. It is very expensive. It's ten percent of our stormwater budget. But I, I hope it turns out well. And I think that we have a good team of HDR to help us out and get there.
Thanks, Matt. Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Matt, or Matt, what's the, what's the term on this contract? The last one was two years. What's the term on this one?
Mr. Chief Executive, Mr. Sorge, you know, this memo, MOU doesn't reference, like the last time, there was a, in the Exhibit A, and that said two-year contract. And I suppose we could clear that up, but the intent was to be under two years. This document should roll out by the end of the year, we're hoping, to coincide with our new permit cycle that starts at the beginning of the year. So if they can move quickly, we might be able to have this document together. But it'll be within two, twenty seventeen for sure.
Follow-up?
Follow-up, but we don't have that in, in this MOU though.
Correct, yeah.
Do we need that? One more follow-up?
One more follow-up?
For the county attorney, Ali Joyce, do we need that to be in this contract? Does it as something that we should have?
County Attorney?
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Sorge, typically, yes, you would have a term for a contract, but it's a memorandum of understanding. And I suppose if there isn't any, there isn't really any necessarily risk in not having a specific term, as long as the work that's done is completed within a efficient timeframe.
Okay. Does that satisfy your question? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive. Matt, thank you for coming up after our conversation prior to the meeting. I appreciate what you stated. And I will state that the check run tonight showed that the fourteen thousand came out of the planning budget, I believe, if I, it didn't come out of this. Maybe Dinet can help me with this. The fourteen thousand, I don't think it come out of the year budget.
Chief Executive, Vincent, Commissioner Fisher, the fourteen thousand, five eighty-seven came out of the super, the stormwater budget, which is underneath the planning department, which is, that's where the confusion lies, is the, the account code on it. But it is the stormwater funds. And that was paid a couple of weeks ago.
So with that?
I would, I would like to make a recommendation to concur and place on file Communication sixteen dash two two two.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to concur. Anything further on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Section three communications to be read and acted upon. If you recall, we added Communication sixteen dash two six to the agenda tonight, which was.
Mr. Chief Executive, it's a resolution.
Resolution, excuse me. So, oh, so should it have been added to section, the last section? So strike that. I will, we'll move that to. Section six, I believe it is. So, so there is no section three. Section four, take note of the following ordinances and resolutions referred to judiciary. Section five, we have ordinances on second reading. Number one, clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Bill number sixteen dash six, Ordinance number sixteen dash six, and ordinance amending section thirteen of Ordinance number five zero nine and chapter fifteen point oh four of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled Building Code, specifically amending section fifteen point zero four point zero four zero and providing for an effective date herein.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Bill number sixteen dash six, Ordinance number sixteen dash six, on second reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there anything on the question? This is a roll call vote, so please cast your votes. All in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Okay, passes. Number two, clerk, can you please read?
Council Bill number sixteen dash seven, Ordinance number sixteen dash seven, and ordinance amending section three of Ordinance number four thirty-one and chapter thirteen point two eight of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled Charges and Fees, specifically amending sections ten point twenty-eight point two ten and ten point twenty-eight point two twenty and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Bill number sixteen dash seven, Ordinance number sixteen dash seven, on second reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Nothing on the question? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Number three, clerk, can you please read?
Council Bill number sixteen dash eight, Ordinance number sixteen dash eight, and ordinance amending section five of Ordinance number sixty-seven and chapter two point four zero of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, entitled Planning Board, specifically amending section two point four zero point zero five zero and providing for an effective date herein.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Bill number sixteen dash eight, Ordinance number sixteen dash eight, on second reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second with nothing on the question. Please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Section six ordinances and resolutions for final reading. So now we will turn our attention to sixteen dash two six. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Clerk has to read that.
Excuse me. Yes, clerk, can you please read the, the resolution that we added to the agenda for this evening?
Council Resolution number sixteen dash two six, a resolution declaring the month of May twenty sixteen as national drug court awareness in the city and county of Butte Silver Bow and authorizing the chief executive to issue an appropriate proclamation and providing for an effective date herein.
Okay, thank you for the reading. Suspend the rules. Prior to, prior to voting on that resolution, we need to take an additional vote to suspend the rules, to pass it on final reading. So Commissioner Palmer?
I'll, I move for the.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move for the suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing Council the Resolution sixteen dash two six by waiving subsection seven of Rule thirty-six of the Rules and Order of the Council of Commissioners thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the judiciary committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to suspend the rules. Please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Okay, so the rules have been suspended. The resolution title has been read. Now, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Resolution number sixteen dash two six on final reading and have, and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Seeing nothing on the question, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Council Bill sixteen dash four, clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Bill number sixteen dash four, Ordinance number sixteen dash four, and ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six zero point zero three zero of Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, BSBMC, which section adopted the zoning map of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for a change to the official zoning district map by rezoning approximately ten acres from NZ not zoned to OSD, Open Space Developable Zone, commonly known as the Walkerville Baseball Field and the Lexington Mine Yard, and to rezone approximately one hundred and seven acres from NZ not zoned to OSC, Open Space Conservation Zone, commonly known as the Alice Knob, Alice Pit, Granite Mountain and Missoula Gulch, and to rezone approximately six acres from NZ not zoned to C two Community Commercial Zone, commonly known as Blaine Community Center, Sherman School and certain properties along West Daly known as one, seven, eleven, thirteen, three oh three, three oh seven, three oh nine, West Daly, and to rezone approximately three hundred and fifty-eight acres from NZ not zoned to R two, two-family residence zone, bounded on the north by Alice Street, on the west by the west boundary of the city limits of Walkerville, on the east by Saraf Point and on the south by Ryan Road and O'Neal Street, and to rezone approximately seven hundred and twenty-seven acres from NZ not zoned to R one S, one-family suburban zone, commonly located in section one, Township Three North, range eight west of the PMM of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
We won't ask you to reread that one. I move to place Council, Council Bill number sixteen dash four, Ordinance number sixteen dash four, on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, can you please cast your votes? All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Next up, clerk, can you please read?
Council Resolution number sixteen dash two one, a resolution amending the budget during the fiscal, fiscal year after conducting a public hearing at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Council of Commissioners in accordance with section seven dash six dash four zero zero six MCA appropriating general fund reserves, which will be remitted back to the general fund after sale of golf pro shop inventory to the Parks and Recreation Department golf course budget and providing for an effective date herein.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Bill number sixteen, excuse me, Council Resolution number sixteen dash two one, on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there anything on the questions? Seeing none, can you please cast your votes? All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Number three, clerk, can you please read?
Council Resolution number sixteen dash twenty-two, a resolution granting conditional approval of the final plat of the Hondo Acres Minor Subdivision of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, State of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date herein.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Resolution number sixteen dash two two, on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the question. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes, Chief Executive. Just had an item of curiosity on this. Has anybody called to see if they could rename it from Hondo to Hando Acres?
I, I don't think so. I, you know, I sure think it's nice that somebody would want to name a subdivision after our esteemed Commissioner Henderson.
He's too busy riding bikes.
Okay. Nothing further on the question? Please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea, zero nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Is there any public comment on matters that were not on this evening's agenda? George? Okay, seeing none. Please take note of the calendar of other meetings and events. Does anyone have anything to add? Okay, seeing none, would appear appropriate for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Oppose? Motion adjourned. Meeting adjourned.